Okay. We are now recording, so I'll call the meeting to order. Minutes will be taken by John, our vice chair. John, are you here? Looks like Columbia Gorge is connected but doesn't have audio. We will be recording the meeting so we can compile the minutes from that.
Do I have another one? Do I need to write one down? Oh, girl. Did you see that?
Okay, and that's a good reminder to reduce background noise. I'm going to keep everyone muted for the bulk of the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute yourself and make that comment. We'll begin with a roll call, so please unmute yourself and say you're here. Hello, everyone, or something as I call your name. So Delia Wallace, are you here, Delia? Okay, well, I'll just go through and read the people that are listed. Let me unmute everyone. Delia, are you here? Hello, we're now taking roll call. Is Delia present?
I think it's time to use the skin color to not answer questions. I actually have nothing to do. But thanks for going ahead and bringing Ray on.
Okay.
I see the conversation.
Oh, my gosh.
Delia is listed on the attendees but not responding. Anne Zwelke, are you present? Okay, she is not listed on the attendance list and not responding. I'm saying that's no. Teresa Chandler, are you present?
Like they're entering smarty pants territory. That just doesn't make sense. I mean, they're sounding smarty pants more than...
Okay. Teresa Chandler is not here.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. You're very faint, though, Buzzy.
Okay, well, that's something. That's kind of nothing.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Okay.
And Anne is here.
Anne is here, okay. Pat Florenson, are you present? Okay. Pat is not. Debbie Lind. Is Debbie Lind here today? Okay. No Debbie. Dia, I believe you are here.
Hello.
Great. Amy Hutchinson, are you here? Okay, now Amy. Ryan, I see you're connected. Can you say hello? Ryan? Okay, Ryan, I can see you're connected, but we can't hear you if you're speaking. Darlene Johnson, are you here? Darlene from Ontario? No. Okay, Mary Finney, you are showing as attending. Can you say hello?
Can anybody hear us? It's going to be more...
Yeah, I can hear you now, Buzzy. You've got a feedback of echo.
I will try to pick it up.
Okay. And I believe Columbia Gorge is John. Linda Stahl, are you here?
I am.
Great. Okay, we do have a quorum. Hi, Ryan, yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. Whenever I get muted by the go-to meeting, my microphone doesn't work after I am unmuted.
Oh, interesting.
For some reason, after a while. I don't know why. So I'll just mute my microphone and hopefully, and then I'll just use my...
Okay, sounds good.
Windows mute function. Hopefully, that will stop me from being dropped like that.
Okay. All right, so let me just log in the rest of the people. We have someone registered as Sage. I think that might be Buzzy.
Perry, it's me.
That's you, Beth? Okay.
Yeah.
And who is admin? Okay, don't know who that is. Brent is here. Cheryl Hancock. We have two connections at Columbia Gorge. David is here. David Sale. Delia, we already noted, is present. Deneen. Somebody from Hermiston. Who is that?
Hey, Perry, it's Marie.
Marie, hi. Okay, Mary Finney, Mary Reeser, Mary Lou Martin, and Ryan. Okay. Okay, with roll call completed, we'll now move on to additions and deletions from the agenda. But before we do that, did I miss anyone? Is anyone attending whose name I did not call? We still don't know who is listed as admin.
Uh, Perry?
Yeah, Buzzy. Who do you have there?
We have... I haven't... I can't figure out how to get the echo to stop. I'm sorry. We have Maggie Pando from the DOWs.
Okay.
John.
John from Columbia Gorge is there?
Yes.
Okay.
And you already got Anne, right?
Yes.
Linda Stahl.
Linda Stahl. Great. Yep, got you.
Jack Wabronik, or however you pronounce your name.
Sorry, who was that?
Jack, from the DOWs.
Okay.
And I think that's it. Here we got Brian.
Okay. Anybody else who we haven't identified as attending? Okay, moving on to the agenda. Any additions and deletions? I did have a note from Cheryl Hancock for a suggestion to amend the agenda. Cheryl, do you want to speak about that?
Yes, I'd like to bring it up to the council about the Learning Express Mark records that are available to download into our catalog.
Okay. So we have a suggestion to amend the minute... amend the agenda. Include that as a new item. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Hey, Perry, this is Buzzy.
Yeah.
Those of us here in the DOWs would like to add an item about discussing changing the meeting time back to 10:00.
Okay. Can add that as a new item as well.
And we could invite here Cheryl very well. What was the items you added?
Cheryl wants to discuss adding Learning Express Mark records into the catalog, which was in the... announced in the letters to libraries online in January that those were available. Okay, so two new items, moving the meeting back to 10:00 a.m. and adding Learning Express Mark records. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those additions?
This is Dia.
Okay, motion from Dia. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconds.
And seconds. Okay. Any objections?
Hello?
Hello. Who's joining us?
Well, this is... This is Mary Finney. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mary.
Good, thank you.
Okay, hearing no objections, the agenda will stand as amended. Does anyone have a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting that were posted on the Wiki originally created by John and I made some edits? Are there any suggested corrections? Any discussion about those? Okay, hearing no objections, the minutes will stand as distributed. We'll now move on to the open forum for general membership. Would anyone like to make a comment on a topic not already on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to reports, beginning with Beth and Brent. We did have written reports submitted that was included in your packet. Hope you... Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at that. Beth and Brent, do you want to highlight any items from that?
Hello, can you hear me? This is Brent.
Hi, Brent.
Hi. So, does it give us a few items about, or are there some that you want to highlight?
That's fine, no, I can chime in later if you want.
All right. Well, to kind of highlight the items on the written reports. I guess the most important was that we worked with the application server and the number rate used in this demo considerably. And the load as well on those. So the uptime and the availability of the server should be increased quite a bit. And some other behind-the-scenes change that should be allowing for greater availability as we go forward. Also, I posted to the Wiki and the temporary documentation site some new training materials that I've kind of created and worked with other libraries' materials, which I'll post in the chat. It's under circulation support on the Wiki. There's about a 70-page circulation manual for, in general, kind of very comprehensive, some materials for new hires, about training agendas, a cheat sheet for frontline kind of circulation staff, and receipt templates for libraries that wish to kind of customize hold slips, hold slips, transit slips, and all the other kind of receipts that can be generated throughout. That's all I wanted to really have, anything.
Okay, and this is Beth. I just want to comment. The cataloging, circulation, logins, and permissions are almost all the way complete. I just have a few branch logins to adjust. The... Wanted to talk about borrowing from EOU just briefly. I sent out a bunch of logins and passwords to sites last night, sites that hadn't already asked for a way to borrow from EOU, and sent some instructions along with that as well. And I don't want to take up a lot of time, but if anybody has any questions about our update, we'd be glad to entertain those now.
Brent, this is Dia. I just had a quick question on the check-out limit increase. Is it 35 to 60 or 35 to 50?
35.
Thank you. This is Dia again. Brent, I had a chance to look at those training materials that you posted, and there's some good stuff in there. Thank you for doing that.
The screenshots that are included in those materials are current with our version of the R and R materials as well, so they should match up what you see when you are logged in.
Okay. Thank you, Beth and Brent. We'll move on to the budget committee and financial statement. The... I did get a new version of the packet uploaded onto the Wiki, so that includes a monthly profit and loss report and a quarterly. Those are also under the budget page of the Wiki. A couple of items to discuss. From the quarterly report, we can see some items that are in red that might be of concern as a high percentage being spent. The dues and subscriptions, I got a detail on that, and that looks to be a posting error. Those are mostly CAT Express charges, so those either need to be posted somewhere else or maybe that line will be reimbursed down by other members. The office supplies is high due to setting up the finances for Sage. We had to order checks and get a ticket book order and an endorsement stamp, so those were just higher than anticipated. So we'll make a correction on that budget here later in the year. The development line, 71% spent. That includes website charges and book jacket images and paying for the new logo. And telecommunications, that was high due to our late implementation of the go-to-meeting. So there are whatever... The telspan charges and then also the $230 subscription for go-to-meeting plus the tech soup charge for accessing that. And for training, that includes charges for the RDA course that Beth signed up for, so I'm not sure if that needs to remain in training or if that needs to be in cataloging. We'll look at that.
Yeah, that should go to cataloging.
Okay. So that would come down significantly if we moved that out. Any questions about the financial report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We will be addressing the proposed budget later on the agenda. Cataloging committee. Is there someone here representing the cataloging committee that would like to make a report?
Perry, Sarah is not here.
Sarah's not here, okay.
Is David here? I don't remember.
This is David. I am here. And, well, where to begin with a report? I'd given one to the cataloging... Other members of the cataloging committee earlier to announce that we have completed a round of Nebraska training with 15 students. There actually, I guess it's 16, there was a late addition who's not completed the course yet. And next week, we'll be holding the first of three go-to-meeting sessions for special topics in cataloging to sort of do some more advanced topics. If you're on the cataloging committee listserv, you probably got an email about that. Next week's is going to be on subject and genre headings. The following month, April, we'll be doing one on series headings, and then after that, audiovisual cataloging techniques. Or I may reverse the order of those last two depending on interest from attendees. Thanks to the go-to-meeting features here, the sessions will be recorded and distributed to folks who are not able to attend the live sessions. Also, Beth will be presenting here findings from the catalog user survey. I'll leave that to her when she wants to introduce that, and I guess I can answer any questions that folks might have.
Okay, hearing no questions for David. We'll move on. Circulation committee remains inactive. Still looking for a chair for that, if anyone would like to volunteer. Career committee. I did get a message from Dan Fail of Umatilla County Special Library District. He seemed willing to have his arm twisted to become chair, so if Beth would like to address career issues and call a meeting, we could probably get him to be the chair.
Perry, this is Beth. We actually had a meeting already.
Oh, did you already? Okay.
We did, and we plan on meeting every other month. And so we had some good discussion of career issues, basically the need for more bags, the need for better communication amongst all the libraries in regards to ILL, courier. So we decided to revitalize the circ listserv and use it for that purpose, and so I've added at least one member from every library to the circ listserv, and we're going to start using that for when people need to put a call out for bags or have other ILL issues. And this is probably a good point to address. We've had some issues with mixed boxes or bags being sent out, so I'm going to be posting a message to the listserv to remind people to individually package items in green bags. So I'm just trying to think of what else. It's a good meeting, good to get started again, and career's very important, so it's nice... We have to make sure it's running smoothly.
So did Dan become the chair at that meeting?
He did, yes.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for the career committee? Well, thank you.
I don't know that we have a procedure for recognizing committee chairs, but it probably wouldn't hurt to have that formally documented in our meetings. Would someone like to make a motion to recognize Dan Fail as the new chair of the career committee?
This is Dia. I would recommend that we recognize Dan Fail as the chair for the career committee.
Okay. Have a second?
Ryan and Legrand, all second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded for Dan Fail to become the chair of the cataloging... or the career committee. Any objections? Hearing none. Congratulate Dan. Moving on to development committee. Anything to note there, Beth or Brent?
Well, Beth, I think we talked about doing the next upgrade sometime in the beginning of April, is what we're kind of shooting around.
Yeah, I'm still waiting to hear a definite date, but that's our target, yes.
And is that a significant evergreen update with new features that...
I think it's fairly significant. We can publish a list of changes out to the group when we have a date. I don't think it's as significant as maybe 2.8 will be, but since we're on 2.5, I think it's important to move to 2.7, and there are some clear advantages.
Okay. Moving on to the governance committee. There hasn't been a meeting, so nothing to report there. Marie, did you have anything? Do you want to comment about the governance committee or issues?
Sorry, I just couldn't get it unmuted.
Okay. We will be discussing transitioning to our new representatives for the new... We will be discussing transitioning to our new representatives for the new fiscal year on the agenda a little bit later, but that's the only governance issue that I think we're currently looking at. Nominating committee. In preparation for the next meeting, I was looking at the bylaws, and the nominating committee is a standing committee that needs to be comprised of at least two outgoing representatives of the user council. So we'll be needing two of those people to serve, probably plus myself, to present nominations for next year's representatives. We'll discuss that a little bit more toward the end of the meeting. No special committees. Any comments about the nominating committee process at this point? Moving on to our business items, checkout limit survey. Let me make that correction of 50 items.
So that had finished with time survey, like the previous one, and it was limited by you had to address which library you were from as well. So you have to ask people to vote in. So it came out that 16 were in favor and 12 were against, with one kind of yes with restrictions on students at checkout limits. So, yeah, how would the council like to move forward with the results of the survey? We can, we can implement it pretty quickly.
So it was a fairly close vote, 16 yes, 12 no.
Yes. I mean, this is bloody, I mean, I have a different, I have different opinions, but our patrons really want to be able to check out more stuff. And I imagine many people, patrons, would really like to check out more stuff. Especially for us, especially his parents who are checking out snacks and books. I think we may have somewhat of a biased perspective that was the former organizing libraries that we are, it used to be 99, I'm sure we all love that, but I doubt we're that, you know.
Okay, so the membership has been surveyed and we've got a result there. We can have someone suggest that we take a vote to increase that limit to 50 now, or should we put it on as an action item for the next meeting to be voted on?
This is Beth. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dia.
I was just going to ask, 28 libraries responding seems kind of small considering how many libraries are in Sage.
I was going to make the same statement.
I'm wondering, you know, we don't have any way to know, is this fairly representative across, or is it a few here or there? So I'm a little concerned about just taking a vote now, not knowing how this kind of, you know, represents the whole.
You had indicated that the survey takers indicated the library they were from?
Yeah, I could list the libraries if you'd like. There were 29 responses actually, so there's that one response that yes, other conditions on students as well. So, I mean, I guess I would also comment that not surprisingly, the majority of the respondents were public libraries. And I believe that the community college libraries and the school libraries often have their own limits anyway. And we only have 33 public libraries, so that's actually a pretty decent process in the public library case. I'm not including the resourcing.
This is Linda from the Country Health Resource Center, and we have our own limits as well, so I think that's a point that's well taken.
Thanks for that.
Brent and I will see.
If libraries can establish more restrictive limits, I guess I'm just trying to figure out with our policies, how much do we have to stay in agreement? Can we, you know, potentially move all the publics to this limit?
I mean, I'll be honest, one of the things that drives me nuts about this consortium is that we do not have this, public, this, like, the library, like, there are some libraries that didn't check out time. I don't know, I find it frustrating, I find it frustrating, I think it's frustrating to have to staff number the phone. I mean, it looks like only three of the responses were not from public libraries, so that would basically mean that we had 25 to 33 public libraries respond.
Yeah, 25 out of 33 is good.
And we have historically had problems getting people to answer anything in Sage.
Well, and in the future, if we ever get the circulation committee going again, we might look at having a different checkout tier, or smaller, or school libraries that they could opt into. We don't want to have too many variations, but it seems like we already do have some of that going on.
This is Dia. With that, with all the discussions, I've removed my objection.
Okay.
This is Anne from Hunter Valley High School. I limit the students to five books to be checked out because they forget where they are and we lose so many books. But most of all of them, including the staff, have public library cards, and that's where they check out, the 35 to 50. I would like to make a motion that we vote on this today, because summer's coming and people want to check out books, and that's really what, to me, what we're about.
Okay, we have a motion to take a vote on increasing the checkout limit from 35 to 50. We have a second?
I'll second that. This is Linda from the Country Health Resource Center.
Okay. So the motion is to increase the limit from 35 to 50. Are there any objections?
I had a clarification. Would that be immediately or in your meeting pack that you mentioned? Possibly wait until May to confirm?
Well...
If that is best, why would it be immediate? Or?
That was up for the, I left, I was going to leave that up for the council to decide. So it sounds like the motion is to make it effective immediately. Is that accurate?
Yes, that was my intent, yes.
Okay. So we've clarified that the motion is to increase from 35 to 50 effective immediately. That's been moved and seconded. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the...
Perry, I just have one quick question.
Okay.
So with that motion passing, we'll make the increase, and my assumption is that's going to be the Sage default policy. And then if there are individual sites that want to limit, like schools, or don't already currently have a lower limit, we would set that for those particular sites. Does that make sense? I guess I'm just clarifying this is the Sage default policy.
Correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding. All right, moving on to the catalog survey. David, how is that going?
Actually, I'm going to report on that, Perry, instead.
Okay.
This is Beth.
All right.
I took the survey down off the website, since it'd been up for six weeks, and gathered the search, the survey results, and actually it was very positive. We actually had an approval rating of 4.29 out of 5. And there were lots of good suggestions offered of, you know, what people liked, what things they thought could improve the catalog. And so I listed all of those, and I don't want to take a lot of time to list them all, but I think there's definitely some things that we can do to refine search limits, to add more things to the catalog, make them more prominently displayed. A lot of people said that they wanted plot descriptions, and we list those. But I think, I guess making sure that more records have them and that the description is more prominently displayed. So there's things like that that we can do to kind of improve the system. So I was really thankful that people didn't just, that they took the time to actually indicate something that we could do or change. So I guess, how should I publish that? I mean, do you want me to just stick the spreadsheet up on the web? Do you want me to just highlight the suggestions in a document? How do you want me to provide feedback from the survey to the group?
I would suggest a highlight report.
Okay.
Summarizing the number of respondents, the main feedback.
Okay, I will do that.
Did you mention the number of respondents? I didn't, didn't I get that?
Sorry, I did not, but I can look real quick here. Or maybe I can't. My sense was that it was around 180.
Wow.
I don't have this spreadsheet up in front of me, and, I mean, I've got the results, but I don't have the line total.
Okay.
Hey, Beth, this is Anne from Hunter Valley High School. I just have a question on that. I'm glad you heard that the survey was positive and the outcome. You're going to post it, and we as the council are going to look at it, and then are we going to, like, vote on or discuss some of the changes? Or what's the outcome?
That's a good question. And I was, I sat down last night, go ahead.
So this is David. Outcomes in terms of the results of the user survey, I can say that one outcome will be to use these as a focus for future training. For instance, with respect to lack of plot description, you know, blurbs or summaries in bibliographic records.
One of the things I was going to do, Anne, as I summarized the suggestions, was to then list some recommendations of changes to the catalog, or things that I know that I could do. For instance, one of the things that people wanted to be able to do was to be able to search young adult throughout the whole system. So my recommendation would be able to create a grouping that would list underneath the Sage library system, kind of like a shelving location, but Sage-wide, where I would gather all of the young adult collections from each of the libraries and have that be a search. So things like that, taking the suggestions and then seeing what we can do, either programmatically or adjustments to fields that are displayed. I would make those recommendations. And then that's something that the council would, could certainly prioritize, or indicate their support for.
Sounds great, thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Beth, this is Mary Finney.
Yes, Mary.
And I don't know if this is feasible or not, but I would like to see how many of the suggestions were things that you said, oh, that's really cool, and maybe did immediately. So an idea of which of the suggestions were immediately taken, undertaken, I think would be helpful for my public to say, oh, gosh, they had these 53 suggestions and they moved right on five of them. I think that would be great PR.
Oh, okay, yeah. I can certainly indicate the ones that will be implemented more quickly than others. Since I just looked at the service suggestions, I haven't implemented any of them yet, although a couple suggestions were more cover images, which we have done, so.
Okay, any more discussion on the catalog survey report? Moving on to the Evergreen Conference sponsorship. Buzzy, do you have a figure for us?
Well, I mean, I'd leave the figure up to the council, but Evergreen Conference, you know, the health center, there are a few different levels of sponsorship. They go for organizations, they go all the way from $500 up to $4,000. I was actually thinking more in the maybe $1,000 to $2,000 range, if the council would be willing to do that. I will say, we do actually, if we do have the $1,500 level or higher, we do actually get a registration waiver. So that would save us $200, $250 on Beth or Brent's registration to the conference. And the different levels do include different benefits as well. They include different side technology in the conference program, logoing on the conference website. If we sponsored an event, like the Hack Fest event, it would also include a sign of the event itself that it was sponsored by a Sage organization. Looking at the financial report, it looks like Sage could afford a couple thousand dollars.
Beth, do you have an idea of what line item that money might be taken out of? Would that be general funds or unappropriated funds, or?
Our contract, the contract with our... The contract with our library districts is probably going to be, well, by the end of the year, will probably be well under $2,000. Now, that's kind of a weird line item to take it out of. But, you know, there's not a lot of... There's not a lot of dates to go on here. Take that one, and just put on the material resources balance. I need somebody else to look at the profit and loss and try to find where that is.
I don't know. I think, Perry, it might be general fund. We do have enough funds in reserve. So I don't know whether that would be unallocated or general.
Depends on what you mean by reserve. We can't pull from the unappropriate endings on that one.
No.
But you're saying Brent's salary is projected to be a couple thousand dollars under.
Yeah, I mean, some of that is just a bill delay, but we're only at 35.53% of... Now, that one's actually hard to smell. So if I'm reading that number correctly, it's 210.1. Take the 104,789, subtract out 45,471, that's correct. Now, maybe not. Sorry. It seems like overall, we wouldn't have anything to do with it. But I think that has to be handled. Brent and I were just talking in terms of the most visibility. We would suggest a silver sponsorship, which is $2,000.
This is Beth. Obviously, it's not very often that we get to host a conference in our area. So I think it's a pretty big deal. It would be nice to promote Sage as a part of that.
We are definitely an Evergreen success story, too. It certainly looks like, especially in terms of just the multi-type consortium, huge multi-type consortium.
We do have $11,000 budgeted for our contingency, which is kind of our discretionary fund. So we could come out of that if nothing else.
I think that would be good.
Okay, do I hear...
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, do I hear a motion to expend the suggested $2,000 for Sage to be an official sponsor of the Evergreen Conference?
Do we need to add to come out of contingency for that? I'll move that. This is Linda from the Plenary Health Resource Center, and I will make that motion to be paid through contingency.
Okay.
This is Anne, and I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for $2,000 to be expended out of contingency to support sponsorship of the 2015 Evergreen Conference. Any objections? Or any more discussion, I guess? Any objections to that? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Sage budget approval. We did see this without any... Well, with some minor changes from, as were discussed in the last meeting. Wallawa, I checked, and they... Both the Wallawa Public and the Wallawa County Library are listed in the membership schedule. Made a change to Columbia Gorge's fee level. And that edit is here in this document. So the most notable element is the 8% general increase to compensate for decreasing career support and loss of EOU as a member. Any discussion about the proposed budget? Additions, corrections?
I have a correction. This is Anne from High School of Matters. I have a correction. Our population isn't the 1248. Does that make a difference?
It's...
I'm not sure the population figures have been updated.
Yeah, I don't know when those were last updated. They probably certainly need to be.
I mean, the only time it really matters is if you're off so much that you're not getting the correct category. And I think there are quite a few matters that... Evergreen Library does not know.
Okay, hearing no discussion, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed budget and membership fee schedule?
This is Darlene on dial, and I propose we accept it.
Thank you, Darlene. Is there a second?
This is Dia. I'll second.
Mary Finney.
Okay, I think Dia beat you out there, Mary. I'll log her down as the second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2015-16 budget, proposed budget and membership fee schedule. Any objections? Hearing none, the budget and membership fee schedule is approved. And now on to the Sage software use policy. This is in anticipation of just some requests coming in to use our go-to-meeting subscription that we need guidance on, say from Leo wanting to use it for their meetings. Or I could foresee that I really would want to use it to communicate with my branch staff, but I should really get my own. This is Sage software. And unless it was Sage-related and not specifically organizational-related, that would not qualify for use of the go-to-meeting subscription per our terms of use. So this policy I crafted based on a software policy from King County Library System and a personal use of district resources policy that we had here at Baker County. And it specifies that authorized use is limited to Sage library system staff, user council and committee use purposes, and designated Sage member cooperatives, such as collaborative grant projects like the Ready to Learn Group. And the Sage staff also would allow Brent's use of that for coordinating the Evergreen Conference. Is there any proposed additions or corrections, changes to this proposed policy? Comments?
One comment. This is David. And that's to say that this policy seems perfectly fine to me. I consider staff training to be an official purpose of my position. So I have no objections.
Thank you, David. Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt the software usage policy as presented?
This is Dia. I'll still move that we adopt this policy as presented.
Okay, do I hear a second? Who is that seconding?
Delia.
Thank you, Delia. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the policy. Any objections? Hearing none, that is adopted. Thank you. And now for the nominating committee. The outgoing members are Delia, Teresa Chandler of Elgin, Pat Florenzen, Amy Hutchinson, Darlene Johnson, and Linda Stahl. So we need two of those people to serve on the nominating committee to present the nominations for new representatives at the May meeting. Can I get two volunteers from those people that I mentioned?
Perry, I can be on the nominating committee if you'd like me to. This is Darlene.
Darlene, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't cleared. So you want two from this list of six?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I will as well. This is Delia.
Thank you, Delia. Okay, and I will be the third person. So our responsibilities, I guess, are to encourage people to volunteer or make some calls to get people to agree to be nominated at the next meeting.
Thank you, Perry.
Yes.
And I recommend that the nominating committee ask Jeff from the Dells. Not now. I'm trying to think. You're welcome.
And Jeff is the new director there at the Dells?
Correct.
All right, welcome.
About 15,000 members. I'm kind of looking over the list of the about 15,000. And we're a rather small group.
Okay, so for the next meeting, which I think ordinarily... Let me see, the calendar, would be held May 19th. It's the third Tuesday. We, according to our bylaws, do need to have an annual membership meeting at that time. If we want to have a... As many members show up and meet in person, Tuesday may not be the best day for that. I'm thinking if people need to travel. So we might look at a Friday... Two Fridays toward the end of that month, 22nd or 29th. How does everyone feel about that?
Of May?
Of May.
Well, the 22nd is the beginning of Memorial Day weekend. So I'm just wondering about that one.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. That would be bad. How about the 29th, then?
Yes.
And...
I think the last time we did, we do it like a little bit later. Like at one or noon or something.
I think we did, yeah. Are you suggesting we do that and keep it on the 19th?
I'll keep over traveling.
Sorry, Buzzie, were you suggesting that we keep it on the 19th and have it at 1? Or have it at 1...
No, I'm at the 29th.
On the 29th? Okay. And for central location, Hermiston or Pendleton seems like they have traditionally been the best spots. Any discussion on where we should...
This is Mary. Pendle...
Yeah.
We could... Pendleton would... We could probably find a place for us.
And this is Maria at Hermiston. You guys are always welcome.
So either one, now you have to choose.
Okay. Does anybody have a preference between Pendleton and Hermiston? I think I'm going to say Hermiston due to the larger meeting room space.
Well, we'll book the room. And if it's changed, it's not a problem.
Okay.
We have a fairly good meeting size area also in Pendleton, but I'd have to check the location, check the availability, I mean.
Okay. So I will say officially that we'll plan on it being May 29th, 1:00 p.m. in Hermiston.
Pendleton does have a better pub.
That's true, they do.
Perry, well, they're also...
So was there a comment there that needed to be made?
Is there a... Is there going to be a setup for those who cannot travel?
Yeah, I would expect we can still use go-to-meeting to broadcast.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Two added items on the agenda. Learning Express Mark Records. So Learning Express is, most everyone is familiar, is a state, Oregon State Library-provided database. And in January, in the Letters to Libraries Online, they did mention that Mark Records for content available through Learning Express is available to include in our catalogs. So Cheryl wanted to propose that we go ahead and add those Mark Records. Is that correct, Cheryl?
Yes, I think it would be helpful to patrons and make it easier for them to discover all the resources that are available through that database. all the resources that are available through that database.
Given the way that Learning Express authenticates, I mean, it's fact that it's there, but wouldn't it be awkward to get it to authenticate properly? I think we should have had our own authentication screen and URL.
This is Beth. I was going to ask how Learning Express is currently authenticated. Is it IP or is it by login and password?
No, there's like an authentication token built into the URL itself.
You're cutting out, Buzzie, I couldn't quite hear you.
There's an authentication token that's built into the URL itself, so if you look at the URL of the library's website, they're really complicated.
Okay, we can build unique 856 strings. The records would be a little bulky, but we could create a separate 856 for each library that wants to use Learning Express through the catalog, which is probably going to be mainly the public's.
I'm actually, I'm wondering if maybe we could, maybe they could be able to be just, yes, their consortium, our own authentication.
So I would suggest as well, just a generic Sage one.
The only cost to it, I think, would be if people use it, then the staff would get attributed to any of our two different libraries, but that's going to be too big of a deal.
No, that sounds like a good solution. Do we want to implement for some libraries while we're working on that joint?
Well, I think that everyone has the individual now going directly out of websites or however to Library, or Learning Express, and I think that would probably still stay there, am I correct?
Yeah.
But then we'd have this other avenue also where...
So does more investigation need to be done before?
I think we just need to contact our only library of the state library. She should be able to tell us about the possibility.
This is David, and I have a comment to make, which is, I'm not, I'm not sure if all member libraries in the consortium have subscribed to the same set of resources through Learning Express or not, but regardless, I think we need to make an effort to coordinate the importation of these records to prevent duplication in the catalog.
And David, I would be importing them. So there would be just one record. So we just got to figure out the 856.
Well, worst-case scenario, I mean, if the 856 proves unresolvable, we can always, I suppose, insert a statement instructing patrons to access the resource through the, through their library webpage.
So I'm hearing consensus that we move forward with adding the Learning Express Mark Records, preferably with a generic authentication token. Any objections to that? All right. Any more discussion?
I guess just who's going to be the one to contact the state library.
This is Brent. I wouldn't mind contacting the state library.
Okay, thanks, Brent. I mean, I was going to volunteer, but I'll let you volunteer.
I'm on the data licensing advisory committee there too. We're in the meeting soon as well.
Moving on to the other item added, changing the regular meeting time back to 10 o'clock Buzzie, 10:30 is problematic for you guys?
Well, I think we just all prefer having it earlier in the day. I don't, I don't actually remember discussing moving the meeting time.
I don't think we did.
I think, yeah, we just talked here among us. We would like it earlier in the day.
It works out for, as far as staffing at my small library, the intention works out better for our staffing levels.
That's a good point. Okay. Well, for the July meeting where we transition officers and such, and probably should establish regular meeting times, I will craft a document for approval that has 10 a.m. as the regular meeting time. For the May meeting, of course, it'll be at 1:00. Review of task assignments. I haven't really been keeping track of that. Does anyone want to throw out what they're going to do? I guess I remember Brent saying he's going to contact the state library.
Yeah. I'll be in Salem at the beginning of April for a general state database licensing advisory committee meeting as well. I'll bring it up there as a meeting.
Okay. Nominating committee's established, so we'll start collecting nominees. I'll get the announcement of the budget sent out. Buzzie, for the sponsorship of $2,000, do you send an invoice for that? Do we just cut you a check?
I will check with the administrative agency that runs Evergreen.
Okay. Beth, you're going to compile a synopsis of the cataloging survey findings?
Yes, I was just going to add that, yeah. And I'll also be sending out some courier notifications via the Circleserv.
Okay. And the 50-item checkout limit can be implemented later today, this week?
Yep, we can do that. Brent and I will coordinate that.
All right, I think that is all. Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Ryan in La Grande makes a motion to adjourn.
And Darlene Johnson makes a second.
Okay. Any objections?
Who's second?
Hearing no objections, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you in May.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Perry.